Okay, we're all set to go. We're going to call our meeting to order and have a roll call by our Assistant City Clerk, Claire Lopez.
Let the record reflect, all members are present.
I would like to thank Boy Scout Troop 722 for doing the Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation tonight. We appreciate your coming and doing that for us. And with that, I think Marcos McGalyard, Boy Scout, the Boy Scout Troop was the one that did our invocation, so thank you for him for doing that. The next thing is our Brown Act notice. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. So next is our approval of our agenda by our City Manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
Okay, is, do I see Joe Gobaldin? Not here yet, okay. I'm looking around, don't see him. Okay, so we'll put that off for a little bit. So we'll move on to our consent calendar, and the recommendations on it are the following: Consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a Request to Speak card to the Clerk's secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. And so we have actually 13 consent items tonight, and...
Madam Mayor, could I ask that Item C13 be removed?
You may. I was going to ask that myself, so...
Oh, thank you.
Yes, so Item C13 is pulled in. Do I have any other items pulled by the Council? Seeing none, do I have any items by the public? No, okay, so I would entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Okay, please cash your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Rigby.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to reflect a no vote on Item C10, please.
Okay. With that, we will move on, and we will go to Item C13, which is CAP number 8268, East Vista Way Raise Median, the award of the contract. And so, would you like a report?
Sure. Thank you.
So, I'll just give a good evening. This is Sam Hasenan, Traffic Engineer for the City Vista. Just give a brief presentation. So, the project consists of constructing a raised median on East Vista Way between the fire station and Williamson Street. And back in 2013, the city identified this segment of road as a high-crash road involving left turns from the driveways, and applied for a Highway Safety Improvement Program, the federal funds, and was successful in securing $476,900 with about $100,000 of local city match. And the project went through the design phase over the past several years, and was just approved for construction by Caltrans last year. This is kind of an overview of the project. The top diagram shows the fire station on the left side of the drawing, and the blue lines show the raised median. As you move to the right of the screen, then goes down below, and continuation of it goes all the way to Williamson Street. So the objective of the project is to prohibit left turns at the private driveways that have been an issue over the years with vehicles pulling in and out of the driveways and crashing straight-through vehicles on East Vista Way. So the project was bid for construction, and the item tonight is for award of construction contract. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, we've had an offer from, for the... Okay, Councilwoman Franklin.
Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
I was just going to say, we'd had an offer from one of the, for a traffic light there, and one additional entryway in between Anza and between, what's the other street?
Townside and Vailteras.
Townside and Vailteras, yeah. Those are the two streets. So we had an offer of funding and to do that, and so I think we're considering doing that. We'd like to maybe amend this to just to take that in consideration. So, Councilmember Franklin, do you want to say anything about that?
I would, if you're making a motion to do that, I would second that motion to approve the contract inclusive of... Mr. Johnson, how do we want to word this?
I think, yeah, do you have one speaker slip?
Okay.
If you want to hear from the speaker, and then we can get back to you.
Okay, we'll take our speaker, Len Schatzman.
My name is Len Schatzman, STA Engineering, Vista, California. Here on behalf of my client, the Barnacles, that have the gas station at 8:45 East Vista Way. What they're proposing or would like to see happen is that a median open be provided at their common driveway with four other businesses, put in a partial signal, and hopefully that will alleviate a lot of the safety concerns that would be associated with putting a median break at this location. I think it would probably be best if the signal could be handled as a separate contract outside of this, so it's not tied up with federal funds and jeopardize this project moving forward. The median opening could be designed and constructed as part of this project as a change order. So, that's where we stand right now. I don't want to speak for my client, per se, but in hearsay, in discussions with him, they'd be willing to pay for the match for the amount that the Caltrans said that they would provide additional funding for, the $10,000, so it could be as high as an $1,100 match. And they'd commit to $75,000 for the partial signal, which probably will run somewhere between the $75,000 and the $100,000 range, depending on design.
Okay.
Available for any other questions.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Councilwoman Franklin?
Just to conclude, we've done a lot of work on this particular subject, and I thank all the members of the Council that have put an effort on this. We've got an excellent proposal to come to a compromise that's in the best interest of public safety, as well as a business that would be heavily impacted by the construction of a median. Really appreciate that business owner being willing to offer to cover substantial costs. And my understanding from the staff is that we would be able to make the change with relatively little fuss. And so I think, Madam Mayor, unless you have a particular thought on how to word the motion, I might defer to the City Manager for the particulars on it, but I think it sounded like, from discussions that I've had, that we could do this pretty easily. And I also understand that what I think is important is the light would help people without messing up traffic. I think it can be timed with the other ones, so that it's all green or all red. So, I think it's a pretty good plan.
Okay. Yeah, Councilwoman Aguilera, Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
That's fine, I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Have we heard from any of the other businesses that are along this block, 823, 865, 859, that are right in that vicinity? Have we heard from any of them about the median at all?
We have not.
I have spoken to the church at 885, who had some concerns about traffic coming into and out of their site, but that was it. And we explained, you know, what the median project was for, and that was the extent of our conversation. We haven't heard from any of the other owners out on that stretch, besides Mr. Barnacle.
Right. I was just wondering, because we have a few other businesses here that will be impacted as well. And I appreciate very much wanting to help a business, but looking at the reasons that we're doing this. And we can't really do a cut-in to every single one of these other businesses. So, that's my only hesitation, is the equity on this one. But the other question I had for you is, I didn't find it in the agenda report. I know that it has been presented to us previously when we've discussed this. But could you please remind us the number of accidents? You mentioned it, that this is one of the reasons we're doing this. What are the kinds of accidents, the severity of any of the accidents, and the number of accidents of people trying to get in the left-hand turn here?
So, the next, this slide and the next one are the map of the accidents that was submitted with the grant application back in 2013. So this one is, it's broken up into the, let's see, sorry, the, this is the injury-type accidents.
Okay, so I see the color down here, and there was one, from this, this screen is really small for me, I'm so sorry, the one in front of us. So, I'm thinking, I see, I see different colors up here, but I'm thinking there's one red circle that you have on here. So that's one fatality, correct?
That's correct. And that's north of, between Williamson and Vailteras Drive. And I don't have the particulars on that at this moment, but that's one. And then the next slide, these are all the property damage-only accidents.
So, just fender, bender, bumper crunch, and things like that?
Yeah, and this is, so this is, yeah, the 10-year period up to 2013. And I looked at the block, let's see, just a block between Townside Drive and Francis Drive. That's where the particular, you know, business driveway is located in the past five years, four and a half years. And I looked at particularly just the left-turn driveway-type accidents in that almost five-year period. There was 18 crashes involving left turns in and out of those driveways.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Franklin?
Those are excellent points that you raised, Councilwoman. I just wanted to fill in on some background, which, to my knowledge, this is the only business that has reached out to ask for a curb cut, and has explained, or has argued that this median would damage their business significantly. And I think that the gas station is a unique type of a business, where for many customers it is a convenience purchase, and many of the other, and it's a three- or four-minute in-and-out transaction. And I think for a lot of the other businesses on that block, or in any of the blocks that were constructing a median, they're a little bit more of a destination, and folks would be more willing to make a U-turn. But for a business like a gas station, I think the convenience factor is incredibly important. And then on top of that, in this case, the business owner has offered to cover, to cover a substantial amount of the cost. And I, so I think is certainly a very fair arrangement that they've suggested. And then in terms of accidents, and I see Mr. and Mrs. Barnacle just arrived, but, you know, I spoke to them, and they were very moved by the city's desire to make a safer roadway. And I think that was ultimately the reason that they decided that they wanted to contribute to the cost of a traffic light, is because they saw that a traffic light was the only way to achieve the city's aim of a truly safer roadway. And so I think going from a, right now, the road is completely uncontrolled, and it would be, either with the median or with the median a stoplight, either way, it would be a completely controlled movement, whereas right now, it's completely uncontrolled. So I do believe, and I think, I think the traffic engineering staff is convinced that with a light, we would achieve the safety aims that we endeavored to in the original design. Correct me if I'm not correct in that, but...
Would be lower risk, as far as the left turns go, a traffic light, yes.
Right. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Green?
All right. So initially, when this came before me, I was opposed to breaking into the median, just because of the concerns that you had, Councilwoman Rigby, is a bunch of other businesses are going to ask, and where does it stop? And I drive this road all the time. I've actually made some left-hand turns out of Francis Drive, and I go to that subway over there by Philiberto's, and, you know, always attempt to turn left out of there. But I think by having this median, it is extremely, it does really increase safety a lot. I know on busy days, you even have people hanging a left onto Francis Drive and going onto Smith Drive back there, which is a residential neighborhood. So I think this will help with a lot of the cut-throughs. As far as the break in the median for Barnacles, like I say, initially, I was opposed to it, but looking at what they're doing with the median and the light, I feel like it is a big upgrade. It is a big upgrade in safety for our community. The other thing is, they have skin in the game, you know? $75,000 bucks is no joke. So, you know, they're putting their money where their mouth is. They're saying, hey, this is going to affect our business, and we feel like we can still increase safety and improve safety by putting that light in there. So, after looking at everything, I definitely agree with Mayor Ritter and Councilmember Franklin that, you know, we should go ahead and approve the project with that alteration of the break in the median, but with the light. And I don't know if we do it separately, or, you know, I guess our lawyer would be the one to talk to about that, but to just have something written in an agreement inclusively, that if we are doing it separately, kind of what the equity share is between the Barnacles and the city on the, you know, installation of the light, would be good to know, so...
Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's one of my concerns, Councilman Green, is how do we, do we know exactly what this light might cost and all that? Because, I mean, $75,000, to me, that's a lot of money that business owners are going to be putting up. He's putting his money where his mouth is, that's awesome. But at the same time, you know, this is a city project, so we are being asked to make a change to a project that was basically being built for safety. And we're being asked also to pay for some of that project, too. So I want to know, how much is this project going to cost ultimately for us to change it? And the $75,000, how much of that will be covering that cost?
So, we don't know the total cost of a signal to serve a break in the median. We haven't priced that out yet. Our estimate is somewhere between $100,000 and $150,000 is a guess of what it might cost to put in the mast arms and all the infrastructure to provide a signal there. Staff would recommend that we move forward with a break in the median and allow for the construction of the improvements at the Barnacles' property, but be able to visit the signal cost as a separate agreement that could potentially come back to the Council, or the Council could give us direction tonight. But we don't have a funding source for the city's portion of that signal typically...
Right. And that's what I understood from staff as well, is we don't have, we don't have any money for signals.
When we have new development and properties put in a signal serving a private property, those costs are typically borne by the developer.
Right. So, I guess I'm, I mean, I'm here to support business, the Barnacles. I think they've been big contributors to the city, and Tax Dollar is one of our best businesses. I buy gas there, my wife buys gas there. They have the best price in town, and good gas. So, I want to help them, and they've, we've been going back and forth on this. But at the same time, I started thinking about this, in that if this was a new project, we would probably be asking that business to pay for lights, right? Traffic, I mean, there's a traffic impact fee. And this is not the way we normally do it. This is kind of backwards, the way we're doing it. But I mean, that's essentially what we're doing. It's a traffic impact fee, right, that's being charged?
For the, for the gas station, you mean?
Yeah. To pay for the light?
Oh, correct. In terms of if it was a new development that was putting in a gas station today, yes, they'd be charged a fairly high traffic impact fee, and they would get credit for installing the signal, but the signal would still be borne by the developer.
Okay. So, how are we going to handle that part of it? I'm a finance guy, so that's, I always think about the money, and I want to know, how are we going to pay for it if we don't have money in the bank to pay for it?
So...
So, as was stated earlier, our Traffic Signal Impact Fee Fund is basically, it's not at zero, but it doesn't have a lot of money in it, a nil amount. We would, if the Council directs us to go forward, we would go forward with the current contract, but we would also then work with the Barnacles on an agreement, if that was the Council's choice. And if the Barnacles aren't funding the full cost of the signal, then we would have to figure out a recommendation back to the Council to explore how that funding would be paid for the remainder of the signal.
So we're not deciding that tonight?
We would like direction from you tonight on whether or not the price that you would require for a signal, so that way we can do our homework on the other end and come back to you with the remaining amount needed. But you're not deciding on the signal tonight, you're giving us direction.
I have a question. Will we save a little bit of money on the not-so-much cement that goes into the new median? Would that be, get us savings from that?
Well, we will have to do a change order with the contractor to be able to do that. We'll have to redesign part of that project. We have to resubmit that design, so there will be born a cost from the city to be able to go forward like that. But I don't think at this point, we know whether there's enough curb cut or cement or landscaping as a savings that would be borne. We just don't know at this time, until we do the redesign.
So, can we approve this today and then bring it all back? But that, is that how you do it, or is that how you...
So, maybe I can explain it one more time. No, I don't mean to say it like that. If the Council directs us to go forward, what we would do is, we would go forward with the current contract. Through my authority, we would do a change order with the contractor to be able to allow for the curb cut for a future signal to be placed at that location. And then we would also, separately from the contract, work with another vendor to provide the signal and do the installation, and then determine the funding that is available for that, if funding is needed from the city.
Okay, but if it didn't quite cost, if we saved a little on the other contract, could we put that toward the new...
I would think so, depending on the guidelines within the HSIP grant from the government.
Yes, we could.
Okay.
Okay, so I still have, Councilmember Green?
Yeah, so I just have a question. Is, in an effort to accomplish two things at once, is it possible for us, as the Council, to direct you to complete negotiations with Mr. Barnacle and allocate, you know, up to seven, you know, like, we'll match what he puts, you know, if he puts 75, we'll put up to 75? Because I know the high estimate was $150,000. Like, is there anything, like, can we allocate a certain amount of funds for you to negotiate with, so you can handle it without having to bring it back to Council and do it all at once? Or is that not a...
It would come back to Council, because we would need to award a contract to the signal contractor.
Okay.
And at that same time, we would need to balance that out, so we could pay for it. So we'd need to come back to you either way.
Okay, thank you.
So Deputy Mayor Franklin, or no, Councilmember Franklin?
Thank you. It takes about a year to catch up. But with, not just here...
I just changed titles, so I've got to get my titles right.
You know, I was going to suggest, because I think, and I understand that you have to bring it back to the Council, but I was going to suggest that, I think you have a $50,000 authority, isn't that right?
75.
No, no, the City Manager, don't you have a $50,000 authority for expenditures without approval?
That you can make decisions?
I'm just, I'm just fixing on a number here, but that's generally correct, right?
I have $75,000 authority for contracts when it is approved in the budget to be able to exercise.
I understand, I understand.
And this money's not going to...
And we're adding to that, I understand. Okay, it was thrown because it was the same amount. Well, what I was going to suggest is, so that we can place some reasonable limit on it, we don't really know. And I appreciate the staff is, I think, being maybe somewhat conservative on what they think that the estimate would be. Mr. Barnacle's traffic engineer had thought maybe we were a little high on the estimate. And I also wanted to point out that Caltrans is offering us $10,000 toward the cost of the change, including the changing of the plans, which I didn't think, based on conversations with Mr. Conley and Mr. Johnson, were going to cost more than that for us to make that change to the plan.
We don't think it's going to be that significant to make the change of the plan. I just want to be clear, that $10,000 can be used for the median break changes, but not toward any signal.
What, yes, thank you. And what I, what I wanted to suggest was, could we place a, an additional $50,000? What I would like to do is support or offer a motion that would approve the award of the contract before us this evening, and also give instruction to staff to, to bring us back a, an item to approve for the half-light that would not exceed $50,000 in city general fund or traffic light fund expenditure. Could we perhaps arrive at that dollar figure? And then that would at least give the staff sort of a working authority to work towards bringing something back to the Council, that the Council had given some indication in advance that it might be supportive of.
Deputy Mayor?
I guess my question, and it probably wasn't very clear, are we setting a precedent by paying for the light for a business? Whereas a future business could say, you did this for Barnacles, why don't you do it for me?
I think that's an excellent question. I had that discussion with the City Manager earlier today. I think the answer is yes, it does set a precedent. Anytime you do something like this, it does set a precedent. However, what I think's compelling in answering that question is the fact that, in talking this through, the City Manager and I could only think of one other similar situation where a business had been impacted in a similar way on a three-lane road, where turn axis had been removed.
And I'm aware of that business, yeah.
And we kind of talked it through, and we said, well, is there anywhere else that would have this exact same impact? And then the other part of the discussion was, has that business owner, that business owner's expressed displeasure that they lost access, and they've expressed that it's impacted their business, but that business has not come to the city and said, this has been such an impact, that I'm asking that something more be done. And I think in this instance, we've got a business owner who said, look, I anticipate significant impact on my business, and I'm willing to absorb a significant amount of the cost. And the other thing that I want to really point out here is, we did some back-of-the-envelope calculations on what the estimated impact, and we kind of know what the impact was to the other gas station, the Mobile Exxon Station on Sycamore. We know there was a 10% or 15% drop, no?
I, I don't know what the impact was.
I thought, well, okay...
From a city standpoint, we don't know what the impact was.
Oh, okay, I apologize. I thought, I thought we had the numbers, but the, I think maybe it was the owner had told us that they had seen a 10% to 15% drop-off. But the point is, if there's some reduction, and certainly for a fuel station, if you make it more difficult to get into, you're going to reduce some quantity of traffic as convenience-based, no matter how good the price is. You know, there's a lot of us that are convenience shoppers when it comes for fuel, the closest station, the easiest one to get through. All of that said, you know, I think in any part of the city, if any business owner, and I wanted to make the point, too, that the Barnacles, when they improved their site some number of years ago, and when they upgraded their site again, they were assessed impact fees and did pay those in the past. This is something where the city is coming and overlaying a change. And unfortunately, our model of having developers pay for everything new doesn't always cover all the costs of when we need to upgrade things. But here we have an offer that's not a required offer, but I think a very substantial offer to cover what could be as much as 75% of the cost. I'd say it's at least 50%, and maybe as much as 75% of the costs. That being said, and to give them some certainty about this process, and also so that the staff can be empowered to come back to us with a proposal that they expect would meet our approval, I wanted to reiterate the idea of a $50,000 general fund or traffic signal fund expenditure combined thereof, as determined by staff. And that would simply be a direction that they add that amount to the $75,000 and the other contributions and the $10,000... and the other contributions, and the ten thousand from Caltrans, if that's appropriate, to add in there. And then that they bring back to the council a propos- and, and, and the reason I wanna give some authority to staff to negotiate in that way is because in discussions, what I think staff would like to do, and staff can correct me, but I think staff wanted to concurrently let a contract for the traffic signal as soon as possible after they receive council approval, if council approves. And that way, the, the signal could be installed as soon as possible after the median is, is installed. So, and the, the, the brake and the median would be inaccessible to motorists until the light is installed, which the staff said could be as little as a week between installation of the median and installation of the signal, if we're able to move expeditiously, and I think that we can.
Okay.
The Barn- I have a card from the Barnacles, would anybody like to hear, would you like to say something?
Sounds good.
After we went on and on, so.
Good evening, Mrs. Mayor and councilmembers, I apologize for being late, we ran into a problem in traffic getting here. But on the finances, I'd like to reiterate myself that we will put up seventy-five thousand. And I understand, for the city to get the Caltrans, the ten thousand dollars, you gotta do a city match at ten percent. We will pay the eleven hundred dollars for that match from the city. You know, I did speak to the mobile station, Jack in the Box on Sycamore, you were right, John, they've lost a strong ten percent of their business. And by my cow count, car counts I did at our facility, you know, less than thirty percent turned left into the station. A real figure, say we lose fifteen percent, that's gonna be in excess of forty thousand gallons of gas a month. Three dollars a gallon, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars lost revenue. The city gets one and a half percent of that, that's about eighteen hundred a month, twenty-one thousand dollars a year. That's lost revenue to the city. This turnpocket, I feel, will keep that revenue going to the city. It's a, and, and I'm here too, not just representing our business, but the other three businesses too, that benefit on this easement. It'd be, this turnpocket'd be going in on the easement. Be our facility, the shelter, the mechanic, the nail salon, it'd be four of us, not just one. And I wanna say, I appreciate everything you've said tonight, that's a, you know, we've worked hard at that station, and we've been there almost thirty years, it's clean, it's well-lit, you never see graffiti there, you never see trash. It, it always looks good, it, it's, it's big, you got big driveways, it's big inside there, you can never get blocked in that facility. If everything's full, you can still drive down the middle, drive down the sides. And that's why, you know, we, we, we need the car count, the other businesses still need to get their customers in there. So, I appreciate your time, and thank you, all of you.
Thank you. Councilmember Franklin?
I just wanted to underscore, cause I had intended to more brightly make the point, that our, our back-of-the-envelope math and discussions was that if we were, the city were to bear the full cost, based on what we, you know, could roughly figure would be the reduction in the Barnacles' sales, it would take the city ten years to recover. But with their contribution, it could be as little as two and a half or five years. I mean, we don't have the exact extrapolation here, but I did wanna make the point that there is also a case to be made for the taxpayers in Vista, that by making this investment, there is a recuperation of the cost to the taxpayer and a long-term revenue benefit to the, to the city's tax base. And, you know, and, and as a good money man, financial manager, that's, there's, there's a, a small upfront cost and a long-term residual benefit to the city. So I think there's not only some good reasons that are other than money to do this, but I also think it, it is a wise financial decision for us.
So, based on those numbers, I mean, I think it would be reasonable to give, make the recovery cost two and a half to three years for the city of Vista, based on that twenty-one thousand, if we could somewhat verify that and say, hey, the city of Vista's willing to sacrifice two and a half years of tax revenue, knowing that down the road, we're gonna be in the money, essentially. So I think that, that's fair, I mean-
I, I agree, it, there is-
You have to put a cap, is what I'm saying.
Right.
For the city.
There is, there is no, there is no certain way to predict what the negative consequence would be.
We can make estimates, we can make educated estimates-
Absolutely.
Based on their, their tax numbers and-
Absolutely.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to take their number of fifteen percent. I think, I've been there, and I was just there on Thursday getting gas, and I saw some, quite a few cars actually turning left from, at night even. So I know that, that those numbers are real. And so, if he, you know, he's counted actual cars, and if it's twenty-eight percent of his business, you know, if we cut that in half, it's fifteen percent, if that equals twenty-one thousand a year, and we can verify that, we multiply that by, say, two and a half times, boom, there's our cap.
I, I absolutely like the way you're thinking. But, but we will get into margins of just a, you know, several thousand dollars either way.
No, I understand.
And so, with that, in, in the, in the name of, of progress, because we are up against some deadlines to get some things approved on this. And, and again, because the Barnacles have negotiated in good faith with us, I'd like to just move forward with what I, what I personally feel to be a reasonable authorization of, of fifty thousand, which is just negotiating authority, this will still have to come back to the council, and we'll still have to make a final decision.
I could support that, and I know Councilwoman Rigby wants, been waiting patiently.
Okay.
Yes, she is waiting patiently for you guys. Councilmember Rigby?
I'm waiting patiently and listening, listening intentively, attentively. I, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Barnacle for coming up and speaking. And I, I just wanted to counter something that Councilman Franklin said, that for me, with the price of gases, what the, what the price of gas is nowadays, it's exorbitant. Through no fault of yours, it's all tax and the government and all that, I get that. But yours is a destination gas station for me, because you do have one of the best prices in town. So when I need to get gas, I make it a point to organize my day that I'm going by your place to stop and get gas. So no matter how this works out on Vista Way, I will still be stopping at your place to get gas. So I wanted you to know that. And I do appreciate you commenting on the other businesses that are serviced by your driveway. And I'm there a lot, but I don't pay attention to a lot of the other businesses there. And I had been under the impression that the Auto Place and the Nail Salon were the next driveway up. But I, I did see in the agenda report, there's, if you go farther back, there's a cut through, which, over by Operation Hope, to the, the other side of those businesses. So that was something I had never realized before. But I did see that, and I appreciate you, you reiterating that point. And also, for you to come up as a business and say, hey, this is really gonna impact me, I wanna see what we can do to change it, and I'm gonna put the money into it that we need to put into it. We get a lot of, we get a lot of things from businesses in the community that are being affected by something. And a lot of them don't do that, don't say that this is what I'm willing to do in the process. So I appreciate that very, very much, and that does make, make some of this a little easier to, to think about. As somebody who, every time I leave your station, I need to make the left-hand turn to get out, this isn't gonna help me on that end. But that's okay, I can go flip a U-turn at the light. But I do worry about some of the other businesses who probably never thought that if they came to council and said anything, that we would consider it, or if they ponied up dollars, that we would consider it for them as well. And I do anticipate hearing from other businesses after the discussion tonight, perhaps. So, I really, really wanna do this. I just feel badly for the other businesses on here, that we're not able to protect them also, but your, your points as to those other businesses was, was heard. So I thank you for that, so, just my thoughts.
I also think it'll help the, the church, because the church, people trying to turn left in that church, they'd have to come down and make a U-turn, a, a lot of people at one time. So I think that will, that will help that, that also. I have one more speaker here, I have Joshua Tienda.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. I would like to speak as a customer, cause I'm, I'm a regular customer of Barnacles. As you say, they have the best price in gas, just, just a, a little bit, one block is, is right there, is seventy-six. And they always seem to be a, a few cents cheaper and, and have the same quality. And I, I live on, on Calle, Calle Colorado, which is probably, like, going towards Anza, if you go up Anza. So I'm always going down Anza and turning right, and then make, make a left turn to Barnacles to fill up my gas, so. I, I would see a personal impact on, on my business, you know? If I would have to always be making U-turns. Yeah, it's gonna be probably in the, an inconvenience, but, I would, and, and seeing that it's always full, I always have to wait for, for, for the next car like it. So I, I see how it's always busy. So, a, a median would probably affect the, the business. And, and just doing it as a, as a, as a customer, you know? If, 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 if the business is putting upfront costs, then probably it, if, it, it's worth the consideration to, to make changes to the, to the plan. Just, if it was just a, just without, without putting upfront costs, probably it wouldn't make sense that the city absorbed those costs. But now, if you're talking seventy-five percent of the cost, then probably that's a good consideration to take into, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Franklin, again?
I just wanted to ask the deputy mayor, he said he would support my motion. Just wanted to ask if that was a formal second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, I have no more speaker cards, and I see no more, oh. Our city attorney, she wants us to chime in.
There was a motion on the floor that you had seconded already, you and the mayor-
Oh, okay.
Had made a motion. But I believe the motion really encompasses the things that you've talked about, which is to approve the contract tonight, award the contract. You mentioned in your motion a curb cut, which would require a change order of the contract, directing staff to take care of that. And then the third thing would be to negotiate a cost-sharing agreement, that was also mentioned in the original motion, so I think you're good to go.
Are we good?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, in that case, if nobody else wants to talk, I would like to cast our votes. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, so, and we're gonna go back, Joe Gobalden is here, he's with San Diego Gas and Electric with an update, and he is the San Diego Gas and Electric Public Affairs Manager, and he's going to do a little presentation for us. Hi, Joe.
Wow, beautiful city hall. Been about fifteen or seventeen years since I was last here, speaking before the council, when I chaired the Chamber of Commerce, I think a few of us remember the old city hall and getting rained on, and, and staff's offices and stuff, so it's good to be back. Beautiful.
Yeah, inside.
Yes, congratulations. Good evening, sorry I'm late, a little bit of traffic. My name is Joe Gobalden, I'm the Regional Public Affairs Manager for SDGNE. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. With the new year upon us, I wanted to take this opportunity to give you a brief overview of how SDGNE and the city of Vista partner together every day. Our employees are not only our customers, but they're your constituents as well. Our highly-trained team of four thousand employees includes ninety-two, thank you, ninety-two employees who live here in the city of Vista. We have a very important mission at SDGNE, which is to build the cleanest, safest, and most reliable energy company in America. Our highly-trained and responsible team of employees are the reasons why we're able to deliver clean, safe, and reliable energy to every home and business every day. Our long history in San Diego, a lot of thi- during our, our history in San Diego, a lot of things have changed when the first electric lines and gas pipelines were installed. From three thousand customers to now over three point six million customers, as we've grown a lot. And of course, we have more than a thousand, a hundred thousand here in Vista. Infrastructure has been added along the way to accommodate population growth. To serve three point six million customers, we have one point four million electric meters, which is more than seventy-three thousand in the city of Vista alone. We have nearly nine hundred thousand gas meters, and of that, there are thirty thousand in the city of Vista to support our customers. Again, our highly-trained workforce is busy installing these electric and gas meters, installing and replacing electric conductor and gas pipelines, all while making sure the area is safe and coordinated with police and fire. As you can see, our, the landscape has changed quite a bit in terms of the infrastructure we use to support our customers. With new technology and climate policies have changed how and when we use energy. Deca- decades ago, our electric resource picture was much different, and our grid was very one-directional. Besides Song, Songs, our fleet of natural gas power plants that were constructed in the fifties and sixties, using oil and later converted to natural gas, had less emission controls and less efficient. Back then, we, we only had a few peaker plants that were called upon a few hours a day, twenty ti- about twenty times a year, to ramp up the electrical generation to be able to serve our customers' demands. Overall, the transmission grid was quite simple and one-directional. Today, our resource picture is much different. Today, our, we've successfully transitioned away from coal and nuclear and replaced all but one of our older gas technology plants with newer, more efficient and cleaner plants that reduce our carbon emissions by thirty percent. The last coastal plan, plant is the Encina Power Plant Station, which will retire soon. We've added new technology to the grid, and with energy storage and fuel cells, our customers have embraced technology with rooftop solar, which is about a hundred and fifteen thousand. This is not included in our, in the renewable energy mix that we use for our customers, which is forty-three percent. More than twenty-six thousand vehicles are electric and, and need to plug into the grid. With this amount of renewable energy, which is a variable and not always generating, coupled with the technology, our grid is much different, more dynamic, and with our needs, our customers' needs being much different. It's more challenging to operate this grid than ever before. Peker plants today are now dispatched more than three hundred days a year, and some units are started multiple days, multiple times per day to ramp up generations so we can meet our customers' demand. I wanted to talk to you a little bit more about our mission. From less than one percent in two thousand and two renewables, today we're at forty-three percent. We expect to be at forty-nine percent by two thousand and twenty-one. In California, the average is twenty-five percent use of renewables, and in the US, it's about nine percent. We are the leader in clean energy, and we're proud to serve the city of Vista. In addition, one hundred percent of our passenger fleet vehicles are all alternative vehicles. Approximately, we now have approximately seventy battery-powered line trucks, or bucket trucks. We're working to modern, modernize our heavy-duty fleet to alternative fuel and electric. Safety is also very important, our company's top priority, and is our company's top priority. Our, our crews have safely briefings every morning, safety briefings every morning, and are trained to always think of safety first. We've made a lot of enhancements to our system, in addition to gas and electric, electric safety enhancements, and no one is doing what SDGNE is doing anywhere in the country by way of fire and weather science. Our crews have replaced more- Our crews have replaced more than 13,000 wood poles, changed them to steel. These are fire-resistant steel poles. 170 weather stations in the region. This is the largest private network, largest private network in the country, which records temperature, wind speed, humidity every 10 minutes. In November, along with UCSD, we added 15 high-definition interactive cameras designed to improve fire detection and public safety by creating a live-streaming view of San Diego's most fire-prone communities. These cameras were put to use last month as our emergency response teams worked with CAL FIRE and OES to identify fires quickly using these cameras. Pleased to share with you an action that the board of supervisors took this morning, where they allocated another $437,000 to buy five more cameras and new sites and ramp up the internet connection speeds between them using wireless technology. I know that Kevin Hamm is always talking to you guys about internet and broadband speeds, so we're excited that it's being used to not only provide these cameras, but also as a wireless network to the region's fire safety locations in the back country. Very important. And all that information is available at our website, sdgenealertcameras.com. So this is available to the public. The public safety officials, fire folks, they can actually control these and move them around to triangulate and find fires and really have instantaneous ideas about where they want to form a fire line. Almost done. Sorry for running a little long. Okay. Our employees also take pride in delivering reliable energy day after day. Thanks to our highly skilled workforce, SDGNE is continuously delivering reliable energy year after year. Our goal is to deliver reliable energy that has been recognized nationwide. We are the industry leading, we're leading the industry in reliability for our customers 12 years in a row, embracing technology to assist reliability by building the largest lithium-ion battery storage facility in the country as well as smart grid technology. SDGNE offers a wide array of energy efficiency opportunities for residential and commercial customers. Whether you're at the SDGNE marketplace or looking for a more efficient washer or dryer or just interested in our business programs, folks can find that online. We're really excited about that. By working with local governments, through local government partnerships, we've been able to provide more than 1,500, I'm sorry, 5,300 residents and businesses in Vista have all taken advantage of these energy efficiency programs. This offsets about 8.7 million pounds of CO2, which is the equivalent of taking more than 83 cars off the road. In terms of our support for the community, we're, it's exciting to be a great, working for a great company that has a lot of ties to the community. Our employees gave to the region nearly $800,000 to the communities. That includes a company match. We're also pleased to provide a wide variety of support for local organizations, including North County Lifeline, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Vista Chamber of Commerce, as well as Vista Cert. Sorry about that. In terms of supporting the business community, a lot of our spend is with DBE, Diverse Business Enterprises. About 43% of our dollars were spent with these contractors and consultants in 2016. As well in that year, we've averaged out about $80 million a year spending with Vista contractors over a three-year period. When we talk about energy efficiency programs, we also are partnering on climate action planning. Echo Choice is a service that we have that provides our customers with more than 43% of the energy. They can actually choose to go beyond that, up to 100%. We also are working with many jurisdictions, apartments, and businesses to install 3,500 infrastructure charging, EV charging locations throughout the region, and we're working with the city on several locations. My final slide. Again, we have new technologies, and one of the areas that we are working hard on is working hard with the city is the advanced technologies areas. This is battery storage, and will help to provide reliable and ready to use for the next century. Some of the sites that we're looking at include some of the fire stations and some of the other items, so we'll be working with your staff promptly. That does it. If there are any questions, happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. That was an interesting presentation. Deputy Mayor.
Joe, great to see you again.
It's good to be here.
Welcome back to Vista.
Thank you.
Hope to see you some more.
Yes, right.
I was just wondering, I've had a lot of constituents ask me about renewable energy, and I know you've covered that in your presentation, but I was wondering if you could reiterate some of the statistics. I know when I went down to investigate this, I heard the 43% number.
Yes.
What is the goal of SDGNE ultimately on renewables? And this is new to me, the Echo Choice. Could you just briefly tell us how that works?
Sure thing. So we're working to not only comply with state mandates in terms of the mixture of the Renewable Portfolio Standard, RPS, which really set goals for us. So we're exceeding those goals. I think by 20, I think the one that we've already exceeded is like 30% renewables, and we've got 43. In 20, I think it's 2030, we're supposed to be at 50%, and we're already expecting 49% by 2021.
So that quickly, that's a straight around the corner.
Yeah, exactly. You know, and there have been legislative proposals at the state to consider 100% requirements to go to 100%. So, you know, I think that that had some legs, but then, you know, didn't quite make it through the legislative process. In terms of Echo Choice, this is one that's very exciting. It's a new program that residents can opt into, for those businesses and residential households that want to go to more renewables in the energy mix that they have. It's a small premium to increase that, probably 1% to 3% roughly, but it's for folks who really are, want to make that switch, they want to make that move, and that is an option that's available to them today.
So here in Vista?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Great question. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, if I might, Mayor. Joe is new to SDGNE, you're fairly new, and so this might not be a fair question, but we do have a Honda dealership that's wanting to come to town, that owns some property, and before they can demolish it, they need their transformers removed, and maybe you could flex your power, no pun intended, with SDGNE.
Yes.
And maybe work with Kevin Hamm to help them out with that. We would greatly appreciate it, getting that project moving forward.
We'd be happy to. I think during this, yeah, I heard that news at the State of the City, and very exciting for the city. It's a great brand, and I think we'll bring another great company to the City of Vista. So, yeah, we'd be happy to help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe, for coming up and doing that presentation. We appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, we're gonna move on to our public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. This is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding Planning Case P16-0401 Vista Self-Storage. So the public hearing is now open, and our Director of Community Development and Engineering, John Conley, will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Michael Wrestler, our principal planner, will be providing the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, the project before you tonight is the Vista Self-Storage Project. Application number is P16-0401. It's a request for a general plan amendment, a zone change, a special use permit, as well as a site development plan. The subject site is 1.92 acres located on the west side of South Melrose Drive between Sunset Drive and Cannon Road. Surrounding land uses include residential to the north, vacant land, as well as residential and agricultural uses to the east across South Melrose Drive, open space, as well as a retail center to the south in the City of Oceanside, and retail, excuse me, residential uses to the west in unincorporated San Diego County. The project does include a general plan amendment and a zone change. The general plan amendment would change the land use designation from general commercial to, excuse me, from neighborhood commercial to general commercial, and the zone change would change the zoning from C1 commercial to C2 commercial. In April 12th of 2016, the City Council had a discussion regarding this item in regards to the general plan amendment and the zone change, and at the conclusion of that meeting, there was a consensus among the City Council to direct staff to accept a formal application. The proposed project would require a general plan amendment, zone change, specific plan amendment, as well as a site development plan. The project includes construction and operation of a 103,991-square-foot self-storage facility on approximately 1.92 acres. The project includes landscape improvements, parking lot improvements, as well as other site enhancements. Hours of operations would be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily, with operations in terms of office hours being 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The proposed project would include construction of three three-story self-storage buildings totaling 103,991 square feet. Access to the site would be provided by two new 28-foot-wide driveways located on South Melrose Drive. Access would be provided for right-in, right-out, turning movements. Improvements within South Melrose Drive would include median modifications in order to create a left-turn lane, allowing northbound traffic to make a left into the northerly driveway. In terms of parking, city code requires .2 parking spaces per thousand square feet gross floor area, as well as three additional parking spaces for self-storage facilities. Based on the square footage identified within the plans, the project would be required to provide a total of 23 parking spaces, and a total of 23 parking spaces have been identified on the submitted site plan. In regards to landscaping, the project has dedicated 42% of the site to landscaping, which exceeds the 15% required per code. The submitted floor plans indicate the three buildings would be configured to accommodate a total of 700 storage rooms, as well as restrooms on the first floor of each building, and an 800-square-foot administrative office on the first floor of Building A. The proposed buildings would be three stories with a maximum height of 42 feet to the top of the tower elements of each building, which would exceed the 35-foot limitation within the C2 zone. Architecturally, the proposed buildings have been designed to maintain an earth-tone stucco exterior enhanced with decorative tile elements, trellis systems, stone accents, spandau glass, as well as stucco banding. When completed, the buildings will exhibit a two-story appearance along South Melrose The proposed general plan land use designation, general commercial, would allow for retail and commercial uses, including a self-storage facility. In regards to the C2 development standards, the proposed project would exceed the maximum height of 35 feet. Although the tower elements would reach a height of 42 feet, the buildings have been designed to exhibit a two-story elevation in order to meet the intent of the code. However, the increase in height would require approval of a special use permit. In regards to parking, as I indicated before, the project meets the 23 parking spaces required by our development code, and in regards to landscaping, the project well exceeds the requirement of 15%. A mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for this project. The mitigated negative declaration was circulated from October 18th to November 6th. The mitigation measures identified within that document relate to cultural resources, biological resources, geology, soils, noise, as well as traffic. Staff received two comment letters, and those have been distributed within your packet. Staff has provided responses to each one of those letters, and again, those responses are within your packet. This project went before the Planning Commission on December 5th, 2017. At the conclusion of that meeting, the Planning Commission recommended City Council approval of the project with a six-to-one vote. With that, staff is recommending the City Council adopt resolutions approving a mitigated negative declaration for construction of the project, a resolution approving the general plan amendment to change the land use designation from neighborhood commercial to general commercial for the subject site, a resolution approving a special use permit inclusive of a site development plan to develop the self-storage facility, as well as an ordinance approving a zone change, changing the zoning of the site from C1 to C2. And that concludes staff's report. Staff, as well as the applicant, is here to answer any questions you might have tonight. Thank you.
Okay, I have one speaker. That's all. I'll take the speaker first. Mike Rolfs.
Hi, my name's Mike Rolfs. I am the applicant.
Yeah, I see that now. I'm sorry.
Vista Self-Storage. I'm just with, you know, we came before you almost two years ago, and I would just like to thank the council, thank the Planning Commission, thank Michael and John and the staff for working through this project, and, you know, we believe we made it a great project, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Do I have any questions from the council? Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think when we met, and I don't remember everybody who was in that meeting, but we talked about the height, and we talked about the 35 feet that is in the plan, and I was assured that that was all we were looking at, but, I mean, now you're looking at 42 feet. Was that something that came up after the fact, or was there just some miscommunication in that meeting?
I think the, I could have the architect here, and he can speak to that, but I think the 42 feet is just the accent tower element.
Right.
So it isn't any additional floor footage or anything, and it's just to bring more architectural relief to the building.
Well, it was a conversation in regard to the overall maximum height of the building itself, so it does include your very top, but that was supposed to be a cap at 35. So I was just a little distressed to see that, you know, that's, we weren't staying at 35, as was the discussion. So that's just my point on that.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I noticed the 42 feet as well, but I'm okay with it as long as it's the accents and that, because I know that we, I would prefer to see a better-looking building than something that's at 35 feet and boring. So I think your architect did a nice job. It makes it look very nice. So my only concern is that it continue to look nice for the City of Vista and everybody that drives on Melrose. So I would make a recommendation that we do not allow extra signage on windows, because I think that will cheapen the building and make it, it's not gonna look as nice as it looks right now, because your drawing looks fantastic, looks beautiful, and the first thing that popped in my mind was, God, what if they put signs all over it? Because I know storage places like to do that. That's not gonna look good, and we have a lot of traffic that flows through there, so if you're okay with that, that's.
I'm fine with that. We don't typically do that. We do have an illuminated open sign that we put inside in the office window, but other than that, we don't put signage on the windows.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Franklin.
I have some of the same concerns, and I would like to hear from your architect if he'll talk to us about the average height of the roofline itself without the tower embellishments.
Good evening. My name is Barry Adnams. I'm the architect, Hard Hat Builders. I know the height has been a topic of conversation for quite some time, and to respond to Council Member Rigby's comment, the architecture did not change, so there, we believed that the building massing was within the 35-foot maximum allowed, and I believe that is what is reflected on the plans. Subsequently, Michael did ask for the heights that encroached, the architectural elements that encroached, which were allowed by code, were not considered, I guess, in the conversation, but the architecture did not change. And relative to the interpretation of the average height of the average height, I might defer to Michael as who is most specific and knowledgeable on the code. But it was our understanding that the building massing was within the 35-foot allowed maximum, and the architectural elements could exceed that as allowed in the code. And so the 42 is a very specific location. And then I'll let Michael and maybe Planning Director Conley to address the interpretation.
So the exhibit before you identifies an example of an elevation of the project. And as you can see, there's a average grade height of 399.5 feet at the middle of this illustration. Well, the code requires that if the, the elevation is at a slope, that the height would be measured at the average grade. So the, in an example of this, the average grade is at 3, 399.5. As you can see, the maximum height of the building could be 35 feet. And in this illustration, along this elevation, the building goes nowhere near the 35-foot limitation. However, if you go to the, the, the south elevation of this building, and you do the same exercise, you'll see the 35-foot limitation, and you'll see the actual top of the tower elements actually encroaching.
The south side being the inner side.
That's correct.
Not the street-facing side.
No, this would actually be facing the driveway entering on the northerly driveway. But you can see where the top of the tower element actually encroaches beyond the 35-foot limitation. So I hope that kind of explains how we measure a building height in regards to when it's...
In this?
A slope configuration.
In this illustration that we're looking at right now, the allowable building height that is the mark, that is at 35 feet?
That is correct.
Okay. And so what I'm seeing in this drawing, this is only one of the three buildings. And I'd like to see this drawing for the other two, if it's available. If you could change to them. But I'm only seeing three, maybe feet, maybe four or five excessive right there at the most. And it's only the triangular peak of the, of the embellishment, right?
That's, that's correct. However, in the other two buildings, there is a bit more of an encroachment.
Do we have this?
However, it's in the same location, which would be the tile elements that are located on the corner of Building B and Building C.
Do, do you have this illustration for the other two buildings handy?
I don't. I just brought this to tonight, just to show you how we measure the...
But it's the cap of the tower embellishments that is exceeding.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, that, that is a big concern, and I wouldn't approve it any other way. But that's, that, that satisfies me on that subject. I absolutely share Councilman Aguilera's. In fact, I had, had a discussion with staff about the signage. Many of your competitors do a lot of signage that is not appropriate for this location. And we, we view this general plan amendment as a great privilege. And this is not typically a business that we would have approved here. And there are going to be some folks that aren't going to be happy with it. So it has to be perfect. It has to look beautiful. And, and I, I'd like to approve it with a contingent agreement that there be no, that, I wanted to make sure, too, the windows are going to be tinted such that I can't see what's on the other side of them. No visibility through the windows. Is that accurate? Except for maybe an illuminated sign that says you're open, that's fine. But am I going to see storage units through the windows?
No. No, you're not going to see, no exposed storage units. But I want to clarify that the retail portion, the office portion is clear glass.
Yeah, that's fine.
Right.
Yeah, that's only in one building, right? But the rest of the windows are essentially, are those real windows?
They're generally spandrel glass. So they're real glass, but there's, there's a solid portion behind it. So you, they're not intended to be seen through.
They're not allowing light through?
Correct.
So they're completely opaque?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that was my question. And then I had discussed with staff some, I, I see a drawing here that has, is this channel lettering on the building, is that to scale?
Yeah, it's, it's intended to be generally to scale. The sign program has not been developed, but I understand from the developer that it will be consistent with what is currently allowed in the city zoning. So there, there's not, there will not, the sign program is not a part of this application.
Okay.
When one is developed, it most likely will be developed consistent, and there will be no variance or no increase. But that sign program will come back to planning.
Okay. Question for our city staff. Are we, what, is there a difference in the signage plan allowed between the neighborhood commercial and the general commercial?
No.
Okay. Okay. I, I do want to make sure that we, in exchange for making this, this big change, which, again, we're going to, you know, suffer some unhappiness for, I want to make sure that we achieve an agreement on the signage that may be even more restrictive. So, I mean, I, I view that as a potential price of us making this decision. I'm, I'm happy with the channel lettering. I'd be happy with some low-rise marquees, some reasonable things. I mean, I don't want you to have no signage. I just, I, I'm very, very concerned that in the future, it, and I want this property encumbered with this. I don't ever want, you know, big orange signs and all the windows. And, I mean, if that happens, you know, there's going to be grand unhappiness.
We'll work with staff.
Isn't that what I said? I think we said that earlier, so.
I, I, I need to be clear about this.
I thought I was. Sorry.
I, I was not clear about it.
Yes, we'll work, we'll come up with a sign program. We'll work with staff and...
Deal allowance.
We're, we're putting a lot of investment into it. We want to be part of the city, and we want an attractive project. We don't...
I'm not trying to beat you up here, but...
We understand.
But this is, you know, there, there are going to be some folks that aren't going to be happy about this. And we're going to have to explain that we've, we've made an allowance, but we're going to have to be able to explain that we put some conditions on it so that it would, it would not be an aesthetic blight in any way. That's, that's incredibly important. We feel like the requirements or the limitations for the, for the signage are restrictive enough to accomplish what we want to accomplish here?
Yes.
We don't need to have anything specific?
No.
Okay.
We will include a condition that there's no window signage. It's already the way we enforce the code anyway, but just to be clear, we'll add that.
The last thing that's throwing me for a loop here, I did not realize that there was going to be a curb cut in the median. And very different from the last curb cut that we discussed tonight, this is not going to be a high-volume left turn. But this is a left-turn pocket with the same average daily traffic as Vista Way. How, how important to your business do you think that this curb cut is? I mean, is it essential? Or, I mean, you're, you're, talk about a destination. If I'm coming to drop off my stuff at the storage or to pick up, I'm going to be there for 15 minutes to an hour, you know, an extra few moments. Was this a reasonable access issue? Is that why we're proposing a median cut?
Our traffic engineering folks looked at it and thought it was okay. We can bring Sam down to talk about it if you want to ask our traffic engineer.
Yeah, I would like to talk about it. Yeah.
Sam, Mr. Hosseinen might have left after the last item, so.
Is, is our city engineer here?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I believe, though, that the review of the left-turn lane was predicated on the fact that there are sufficient breaks at the signal at Sunset to allow for left turns, and that there's a fair amount of sight distance there coming down the hill. And so they didn't perceive, you know, the kind of dangerous situation that you had in the prior item.
I... Okay.
But it's at the council's discretion. I mean, we have complete control in the right of way. So if you want to continue to have a raised median there, we can certainly do that.
What is your assessment of the impact of this curb cut on your business?
It's significant. I mean, it takes all of the northbound traffic. And otherwise, you know, they have to go out and they have to, you know, make a U-turn, you know, trucks or whatever that would be coming in for loading. It's significant. I believe it's also serving the development across the street. So it's...
There's a proposed development across the street.
The car wash.
Correct. That's not gotten approval yet.
So the curb cut would allow for, what is it, a left-in? It would allow for a U-turn to get back to the car wash?
Left turn in or U-turn. You could sign no U-turns, but it'd be highly unlikely that that would be...
Would I be making a U-turn or a left turn into a driveway right there?
You'd maybe make a left turn into the driveway to the business, but you could also potentially do a U-turn at that location.
Right. Okay. But the, but the car wash entrance, that's far enough up that that's what that would be?
You can see the car wash entrance on this drawing. It's directly opposite the turn lane into this project site.
Okay. I, I, on the drawing that's up on the screen, I don't see the, I don't see the, the entryway to the car wash. I don't see the driveway. Are you looking at it? I see the curb cut. I don't see the driveway demarcated.
There's not an actual driveway yet. It's going to be across the street.
He said he was looking at it in the drawing. I don't...
If you look up on the, this is the turn lane that would go left into the...
So it is right there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I, I can, I can certainly understand for the car wash that it's probably a deal-breaker. So if it's serving both, okay. All right. I don't have any other questions.
I have, I have a speaker. Do you want to do that before I take the, okay. Linda
Good evening. My name is Linda Franson. I reside at 554 Osborne Street in Vista, and my family owns the property across Melrose, part of the agricultural at 1476 Fern Place. So I just wanted to say that we're, big approval of this project, because we are excited to maybe see this area go commercial. So we were, I really liked the elevation. It looked really nice, and I'm very picky. So I thought it was a really nice elevation. And just wanted to let you know that as neighbors to this project, we're, we're, we're excited to see it happen.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Green.
There we go. First of all, how refreshing to have a neighbor come up in support of a project. Thank you. That's awesome. Never see that. So initially, when I heard you guys wanted to build a storage facility here, I was anti, because I, I've seen storage facilities in my city. We have a lot of older storage facilities that look nothing like this. I feel like the product you're bringing to that area is remarkable. It looks great. It's beautiful. I think it brings something different to that area. I drove down that road for lots of years. I graduated from Rancho Buena Vista High School and have battled traffic up and down Melrose my entire life, pretty much. And I think having a storage facility there is in a high-traffic business. You know, you have people going in and out, you know, sporadically to put their stuff in. So I definitely do support it. I did have a couple of questions, though. The height limit, I, you know, I, I like the idea of from the street, it meets it. It's the backside of the property that exceeds it. I think making the exception for that isn't that big of a deal, especially because it's just the, the tower portion. The question that I had for you is, why do we have the height limit? Was it a safety issue? And when was the height limit installed? Have we ever changed this code? Because before, we used to have really weird fire trucks that didn't have these boom lifts that go up like 100 feet. And I'm thinking it, maybe it was because of like a safety issue. I don't know why we have it, but I'm wondering, why do we have it? And when is it? And is it maybe time to look at code again as well for this particular type of development? Because these towers really do add a nice aesthetic to the appearance of the building. And I don't think they're obstructing anybody's views very crazily. And, you know, I don't know why it would be that big of a deal to go a couple of feet over if it looks better. So.
So that's the purpose of the special use permit, is to allow architectural enhancements above the height limit of the zone? And that's what they're requesting tonight? And that's the exact purpose, is to allow some tower elements or some kind of architectural features?
So is the 35-foot limit due to a safety reason, or is it due to a...
No, that's just been an established height limit in the city for as long as we've been incorporated.
Oh, wow.
And it's really a community character thing.
Well, they probably didn't use to build a lot of buildings over 35 feet, is what I'm getting at, you know? Like, it's, it's a little different times than when we initially wrote that code. So I don't want to make too big of a deal about it, because they weren't building buildings. You know, the, the storage building that was built in 1960 is probably off of Olive, and I wouldn't have approved it in this situation. So I like this building. I like this project. And one question I had about the median, who pays for that median?
The applicant.
The applicant? Oh, hey, thanks! Look at that. All right. Thank you so much. That's it.
Councilmember Rigby.
So just going back to your question about when did we make that height, we reiterated that in our general plan and in our zoning, which we just revisited. It's not that old. And I'm not a fan, and, and we had this conversation, and you know where I'm going with this, because we have a general plan, and we have zoning in the city, and we just amended those not long ago. And so I'm not in favor of, of changing them at this point. I think if we're going to be changing and doing a lot of amendments, that some, a few have been presented to the general plan, then it's probably time for us to go back and revisit our general plan as a whole, to see what is going to fit with our community. But we spent a lot of time and energy and community comment on our general plan. So I'm not in favor of changing that. But we had that conversation, and, and you knew that. The other comment that I had for you is, I, I heard that the signage is still up in the air about what you're going to put there and what it will look like within the parameters of what the city is asking. But in your picture here, I, it's very hard to see. But does that say Melrose Avenue self-storage? And I was going to see, if you were going to add the name to it, it's Melrose Drive.
I think the architect just put that as just a graphical representation of what a sign would look like.
And then I want to say thank you to the resident who came up and spoke, and that you're in favor of, of this and some of the development that might be proposed in that area. And if we do start looking, I want to say thank you for being here. And you were the only one. I've heard from a lot of people on this particular item, and you were the only person who said that you approved it and you liked it. And I, I anticipate at some point, we are going to be reviewing our general plan. And I encourage you to stay connected with the city and, and get notices when, whenever that would happen, so that you can have a voice in what we want to do with that particular neighborhood, since you live there. So I just want to say thank you for coming out and, and telling us your opinion. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to concur with Councilwoman Rigby on the, you know, we just recently went over our general plan. So I think it is pretty up to date. But at the same time, you know, we, we don't have a crystal ball, so we can't predict everything. And I think that's why we're here, is to make those decisions and make those changes. We just have to, we do have to make sure they fit the community and, you know, seven feet here, seven feet there, you know? I mean, we have to take those into consideration. How will it affect the surrounding community? How will it look on the street? And, you know, I think the 35 feet does fit for most areas, you know? But that's why we're here tonight, is to consider an exception to that, so that we can take a look at the, the pluses and the minuses. And I think the pluses definitely outweigh the, the negatives in this case. So I would like to make a motion to, to close the public hearing, approving the mitigated negative deck, approving a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from neighborhood commercial to general commercial, and approving a zone change from C1 to C2, and approving a special use permit inclusive of a site development plan to develop the 103,991 square feet, including the signage restrictions that were presented here as well.
And before, I'll get to Councilmember Franklin in a second, but I just wanted to thank you and tell you that I think it looks, I think it looks really good. The architecture, it looks good to me. And the extra height, I think, makes it look better. This is a difficult site to develop, I, I know. So I, you know, I, I approve of it. And I think you met with the neighbors, if I remember, behind and everything, and they were, they were okay with it. So I would, I will second your motion. Now I'll go to Councilmember Franklin.
Thank you. And I just wanted to be on the record as saying, and I, I appreciate you brought a nice project. And, and I didn't mean to be too critical. I just wanted to make sure that we're holding you to some very high standards here, because, you know, I think the community would have liked to have seen something that would fit into the original plan of neighborhood commercial. Many years have gone by. We recently have almost a completely failed shopping center with Ralph's right next door. Sadly, a lot of the neighborhood retail that we once had, you know, I, I love shopping on Amazon. I'm one of the people that's hurting the small retail business by buying on Amazon and, you know, getting packages through the mail. I just wanted to say, and just, you know, I, I just, for posterity, because, again, I know some people aren't going to be happy about this decision. I just, I just wanted to put it out there for the community that we put a lot of time and thought into what the highest and best use was. And I do firmly believe that as a property owner, you have the right to the highest and the best use. And you have a right to profitable enjoyment of your land. And the bottom line is, my best understanding of the history of this land... of the history of this land is that this is the first viable development proposal that this land has seen. And I do thank you for bringing a really nice project with a really nice design, I compliment your architectural work. It does, it's the nicest self-storage facility that I think I've seen, but it needs to be for this location. This is a premier location in our city, and so it really needs to look nice. So I appreciate your, your efforts in the, in that regard. And I wanted to let our community know that we did fight for the very best thing that we could do on this location. Unfortunately, it's, it's just not, in more than 20 or 30 years, proven to be a desirable installation for a traditional retail environment. So with that, I also support the motion.
Okay, seeing no more, no more speakers and not having any public speakers, I would call for the question. We, he closed the public hearing already, so we have, just cast your votes. That motion passes with one, one dissenting vote. Okay, moving on, and we have, it's oral communications, each speaker is given three minutes. To speak on matters not on our agenda, and we have three public speakers, and so I'll call the first one, which is Carl Hughes. Hi Carl.
Hello, City Council.
Oh, you have a PowerPoint you're gonna do?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have, do you have the little clicker?
No.
No? Oh, okay.
So, this isn't on the agenda specifically, but I wanted to address this today because there's not many advocates out here, so. So I'm, I'm glad that you guys enforce the marijuana laws here in Vista. I believe that you should preserve the ban and stand strong. I don't think the clicker's working. All right, so, I've done my own little research online and discovering throughout the city that there are about 13 known operations at this time that are legal. And these are quite publicly available online through Google searches and weed maps. And you can easily find these publicly displayed. Move on to the next one. Some of these are in the county, but some operation like this called Gold Coast is actually operating in a very busy shopping center with restaurants, snack shops, Metro PCS. And I managed to contact the restaurant owner that's right next to, right next door, and they complained of the smell. And we should also take note of what they have on their menu, as they say, and their medical products, which go by the names of Alien Tarantula, Mendo Breath, Jesus Christ OG, Sour Skunk, Cookies and Cream, Creamy Strudel, Hippie Cookie, Punch Bar. And what's really concerning is the fact that they call it high dose, which they talk about a really high amount of THC, which is the psychoactive substance in marijuana. There's also the 420 bar and the fried chicken pre-roll. And I take concern over the fact that they call these medical products, given these very ridiculous names. A lot of these products actually contain a lot of THC, which is psychoactive, as I said before, and does a lot more harm than good. So why, we should stand up to marijuana and say no to drugs, as I've been taught. It's actually a violation of federal law, as seen by the Controlled Substances Act. And as city, local laws and state laws, they have to follow federal law, as written in the supremacy clause. We know that Attorney General Jeff Sessions is committed to enforcing federal law, which includes all throughout the US and California. And we know that there's harmful effects with marijuana, such as addiction, car accidents, a lot of mental health issues. And we know that, obviously, if there's more marijuana dispensaries throughout the city, that the youth will have actually more access. And we know, surprisingly, the California government stated in their Prop 65 warning that marijuana smoke does cause cancer. And that's seen by the OEHHA. And that's about it.
Thank you, very nice presentation, we appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you for that. Our next speaker is Kelly McCormick.
Hi, I'm Kelly McCormick, and I could not have been led off by a better speech, so fantastic job. I'm here to talk about the same topic, and I'd like to commend you for taking a cautious approach to marijuana regulations and deciding to wait. About 70% of cities have joined you in banning pot businesses. In cities that have allowed it, the black market is still thriving due to the high cost of legal marijuana, the higher cost, and also the excess amount of pot being grown in California, there's just so much out there. Also, regulating these businesses is difficult and outrageously expensive. To illustrate the point, we were promised by the state a computerized seed-to-sale tracking system that was supposed to follow the plants through the entire supply chain to make sure the product doesn't drift into the black market. Well, that system is non-functional and there is no estimate of when it might be up and running. Instead, the businesses are being asked to document sales and transfers of pot manually, using paper invoices and shipping manifests. What could go wrong? Of course, that raises the potential that an unknown amount of pot will continue slipping into the black market. And finally, to reiterate the point that we don't need to add more pot into the city, Vista Unified School District sent a letter last month to parents about an increase in the number of students under the influence of controlled substances. And they named Xanax and marijuana. This has led to an increase in the number of suspensions and expulsions in Vista Unified as well. The letter also notes that there's been an increase in the number of teens using controlled substances throughout San Diego County. And this is the copy of the letter, which if you haven't seen it, I'll be happy to email it to you tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, our last speaker is Chad Spinks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. I just wanted to follow up on what I came to speak on last time we were here for, regarding the skate parks. And I wanted to thank you for putting the lights on and unlocking the bathrooms. I think it's been a step in the right direction. I know there's a lot of work to be done there, yet, still. And, you know, we've been, I've been doing my part, at least going down there, trying to be a positive energy for change down there, as well as our art group and Only Losers Litter. We had a trash walk that we did down there last weekend, where we brought donuts and encouraged kids to pick up trash. And there seemed to be a really positive response to that. It was really good to see some of the kids just being really excited to see, you know, some, some positive change. And I, I think that if we continue to have faith in these kids to do the right thing, that ultimately they will. And just wanted to thank you for that. And also, I wanted to just commend the city on a recent discovery that I've had with Bingle Terrace. I've recently gotten into frisbee golf, and I think it's fantastic. The course out there is phenomenal. It's a lot of fun, good family fun. And just wanted to encourage anybody who hasn't done it to do it, because it's fun. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks Chad. Okay, that brings our oral speakers to a close, and so we will go with, I have comments, mayor's comments here. I want to thank the chamber of commons for hosting our annual State of the City luncheon yesterday. My State of the City address and a list of the city's significant 2017 accomplishments have been posted on the city's homepage at cityavista.com. And we have accomplished a lot in the last year, so it's, it's pretty interesting. The San Diego Theater Critics Circle has nominated The Moonlight for several awards, including Outstanding Resident Musical for In the Heights, which was amazing show. It was written by Lynn.
Manuel Miranda.
Manuel Miranda, right. Who's the same one that wrote, I am, yeah. Alexander Hamilton, I am Alexander Hamilton, it was going in my brain here. And so it's an honor to be nominated, and we look forward to the award ceremony on February 12th. It was, it was just an excellent show. So, this Friday, January 26th is Fine Free Friday at the Vista Library. So return your library books, CDs or DVDs, or other overdue materials on the last Friday of each month, and the library will forgive the fines. And one last thing, a new art exhibit, Golden Visions, featuring the works of artists age 55 and older, is now on display outside of the council chambers through February 16th. And they have some great, great photos out there for you to go look at and paintings. So that's all of my notices. Do you have some? You wanna go on this way first? Okay, go this way first. Deputy Mayor? Nothing, okay. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do want to report out from my trip to Sacramento last week. I was up there for the League of California Cities Policy Committee, for the Revenue and Taxation Committee. And the big, a couple of big topics that we talked about was California's response to the federal tax law changes. And the assumption is that California residents will not benefit from a lot of the federal changes in tax law because of the higher amount of taxes that we pay here. So the state of California has got a couple of proposals, things that they want to do to help Californians. Keep an eye out for those. I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail on those here, but keep an eye out on those. They, they didn't really make any sense and they sounded like they'd cause more trouble for Californians than they would help. And then also Prop 13, there's a big push in Sacramento to backtrack a little bit of Prop 13 protection that we have. Again, in California, Prop 13 saves a lot of people property tax money, so keep an eye out on that. And then the 2018 proposed budget came out, and also we have a new housing law booklet, 2018 Guide to Housing Laws in California. And so I have copies of all of these to share with my colleagues and I'll put them on your desk. But I just do encourage everybody to pay attention to what Sacramento was doing, because they are looking at trying to increase taxes on many levels in California, while at the same time trying to do something to help us on the federal level, which sounded pretty sketch, in my personal opinion, and I wasn't the only one who thought that, that what they're trying to do is gonna cause more trouble. But we really need people to pay attention and contact your state legislators and tell them that they need to work harder for you on that. And then we had Sandag Public Safety Committee meeting last Friday as well. And it was just updates on some things and, as well as an update. And not yet the final report for the lilac fire, that will be coming out probably in another 30 to 60 days. But we did have a report on that and some of the resources that we had. And in previous fires, we've known that when the fire breaks out, sometimes later in the day or it gets bad, we haven't been able to have nighttime flights. And that had made a difference in the significance and, and the impact of the fires. And this time, we were able to have water flights at night, which really helped that first night to, to stave off the fire. And I know Chief Han is here and could probably talk more about that. But it was a really positive report on everything that went right for a fire. You know, the fire is not a good thing, but our public safety here, North County Fire, Vista Fire, who worked on the lilac fire, did a really great job. And so we, we got to hear a lot of the, the, behind the scenes of what happened. And so I appreciated that, and I wanted to give Chief Han and the Vista Fire Department a shout out. You did a great job working for that and, and helping protect our community, which was huge. So other than that, hello and thank you to everybody who is still here tonight.
Councilmember Franklin.
Well, I couldn't agree more. Anytime Sacramento says they want to do something to help us, I'd be very, very afraid, because nothing good ever comes out of Sacramento. And they, they'd find 10 ways to raise taxes in anything they call a tax cut. I just wanted to remark, what a wonderful presentation I thought the young man gave. That was incredible. I, I hope he's not gonna be running to take any of our jobs anytime soon, because he'd be pretty successful. And that was a great point that was made about the manual tracking. You know, I have some friends in the trucking business. The price of trucking in America, it just went up by 20%, 30%, 40%, because new law requires truckers to use electronic logs and they can no longer cheat them. And every, every trucker and trucking company in America, not everyone, the vast majority of them were, you know, folks were driving longer than they were supposed to without brakes, which wasn't safe for the American motorist. And, you know, the reality is, when you give people the opportunity to cheat a handwritten log, there are a vast number of people who will do that. You know, and also, I'm, I'm aware, twice removed, of somebody who was growing marijuana in Colorado, this is a friend of a friend of a friend, and they were approached by the Mexican drug cartels and were basically told that however many plants they were growing, you know, say it was 100, that they were gonna now report that they were growing 500 plants. And if they refused, they'd be killed. You know, there's a lot of violence that accompanies the marijuana industry that is not reported on, because people are deathly afraid. It did come out about two weeks ago, a San Diego dispensary owner who was taken to the desert and brutally tortured, and his body washed in bleach and, and thought dead by his assailants. And somehow the man wound up crawling his way back to society, they thought he had money buried in the desert. Some really horrible crime that accompanies this industry, and that's something we really need to keep in mind. We need to keep in mind the fact that the largest, the largest company in the marijuana business in the world is the Mexican drug cartels. And they're not letting go of their market share without a fight. This is a lot of violent, dangerous crime that people will not report to the police because the threats of violence are real. And so that's really scary stuff. So that's another really concerning part of marijuana industry coming to California, that we owe a duty to all of our citizens to be aware of and to warn them about. And again, it was fantastic presentation, thanks for coming here tonight.
Councilmember Green.
All right, well, part of my job as a council member here is to serve on the board of the Regional Solid Waste Association, aka RISWA. So my meeting just happened to fall this quarter. And Vista actually is the treasurer per se, we hold all the money for the RISWA organization and one of the household hazardous waste recycling facilities, one of the biggest ones in the county actually, is right here in Vista. And one of the reports was that we are recycling more household waste here in Vista than they are in any of our joint power authority cities, which are Delmar, Encinitas National City, Poway is really crushing it, but in my opinion, we're doing better, Solana Beach, Escondido, and then Vista. So these are the seven cities that have a contract with the Regional Solid, you know, Waste Association. We all are serviced by EDCO. The big thing that comes down from Sacramento, which, like you say, anytime they say something, we gotta kind of figure out how to do it, is organic recycling. And how are we gonna recycle the food that we don't eat? What can it be used for? EDCO has been at the tip of the spear in recycling their organic waste, and they actually have their fleet of trucks now, which is powered with CNG gas, or, you know, renewable energy gas that they, you know, get from the organic waste. With RISWA, we, at this meeting, we decided to allocate some funds to implement a new organic waste diversion program throughout the city of, throughout the county, basically, all of these cities that are incorporated, in conjunction with I Love a Clean San Diego and some other organizations that presented for us. So I'm happy that, you know, I got to be on this particular board, and I'm getting to learn a whole lot. I will be attending the Waste Expo in April, where I get to drive a trash truck through an obstacle course, which is gonna be extremely awesome. Lastly, I want to make sure that I thank Donna and Imelda, they put on this art exhibit with our senior citizens here. Our seniors actually had to come into our senior center, you know, fill out an application for it, bring their art in. It was all judged, there was a first place, second place, third place, some honorable mentions. The award ceremony was awesome, everybody was smiling, and it was really cool to see this art gallery active here in Vista. So thank you Donna and Imelda. The state of our city was awesome, our city is strong. Thank you guys for all the work you've done before I was elected and everything we've accomplished this year. And Chad Spinks, love when you show up, man, love when you talk about the things you use in our city. It's great to see citizens working hard to improve our city and actually using the resources we provide for you. So thank you with that, that's all I got.
Patrick, City Manager.
The follow-up to our third community workshop for Bub Williamson is gonna be on Thursday, February 22nd at 6:00 PM at Great Vine Elementary. And the workshop will review the updated conceptual plan for the park. The first two workshops- The first two workshops were to take input from the residents, came back to the city council, and now it's present the conceptual plan to the residents and get their feedback. If people aren't able to attend, they can provide their feedback to city staff, and they can get more information online at cityofvista.com. Next month, we will have two community workshops that are scheduled for the new park at Palavista and Civic Center Drive, and so signs will be going up. Those are on March 15th at 6:00 PM, or March 24th at 2:00 PM, and those will be held at the Civic Center. You can attend one, you can attend both, the workshops are designed to be the same, but residents can attend one or both, and if residents aren't able to attend either, they can provide their input to staff as well, and that's at cityofvista.com for more information. The Community Emergency Response Team, otherwise known as the CERT program, begins in March, so if you're interested in this eight-week course, it's free, prepares residents for emergency situations, and allows them to care for themselves and for others during this time. And so if you're interested, you can register at vistascert.org. And I wanted to welcome our new management analyst, who started this, at the beginning of this month, in the city manager's office. Her name is Shamira Harris, and Shamira, if you wouldn't mind raising your hand and saying hello. I won't embarrass you and have you come up, but she is our new management analyst in the city manager's office, so we're very happy to have her. And last is Lauren Warham, who is our finance director, in the very back, it's her birthday, so I just wanted to say happy birthday to Lauren.
Happy birthday, Lauren.
She's ducking down. So thank you.
Okay. How about City Attorney, anything tonight?
Well, yes, I will throw something out tonight, in light of Carl and Kelly's comments. I just thought I would follow up in terms of the ban, to let you know that thus far, we have closed down 46 illegal dispensaries in the city. At the moment, we have five or six less than is advertised on Weed Maps, but certainly five or six more than we would like to have in the city. Tomorrow, we may have seven, that is the way they grow, like weeds. We, a few weeks ago, we had closed a dispensary on Francis Street. Search warrant, everything was taken, the place was boarded up, and a few days la, and it was red-tagged, their electric meter was removed. And a few days later, unpermitted solar had been put on the roof, batteries had been put inside, wiring's hanging out, and they were back in business. Last Monday, using a civil abatement warrant, we cleaned it out again. It's boarded up again, even more tightly, but every day, we find screws being removed from the plywood as they try to get back into the building. That is how much respect they have for the law. Thank you.
How about City Clerk Stone there, Kathy? You don't have you anything? Nope, nope, okay.
Madam Mayor, before we conclude, can I make one more remark? Which is that I think we should move that any city employee who is celebrating their birthday should be excused from the council meeting at the discretion of the city manager within the confines of their presentations for the evening.
She asked, but that's what weekends are for.
Okay, before we adjourn tonight's meeting, when you were talking about EDCO, we lost Jeff Ritchie, who is a big supporter of our city and is a great guy with Vice President of EDCO, and so we're, tonight, wanted to adjourn in honor of the memory of Jeff Ritchie. So with that, we are adjourned.